Good evening, everyone. The meeting will come to order. Madam Clerk, could you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk’s office in preparation of the council meeting notice dated May 27, 2021, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that the fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the dais and return it thereafter.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Could we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Allen, here. Ms. Hairston?
Here.
Ms. Little?
Here.
Mr. Naidoo?
Here.
Mr. O'Sullivan? Mr. Barton?
Present.
President Fox?
Here.
Okay, so moving on to the pledge of allegiance. I guess we’ll just all do it together.
[inaudible]
All right. Madam Clerk, could you please read the notices regarding closed session and hearings and comments?
Yes. A closed-session meeting is authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Summit YouTube channel and Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTTV, Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the City Clerk’s office at rlicotise@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length. Unless you are using electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And now we’ll move on to the minutes. We only have May 18.
May 18.
Okay, great. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes, regular enclosed session of May 18?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I’m abstaining because I wasn’t at that meeting. Okay, thank you. Okay, so the motion carries. Moving on, we’ve got reports. Madam Mayor?
Good evening. Thank you very much, Council President. I just have two quick announcements. First, on Wednesday morning, June 16, from 10:30 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., Summit Police Chief Andrew Bartolati and Mountain View Emergency Communications Director Jeremy DeMar will be on Facebook Live answering questions from viewers about 911 and emergency response in Summit. If you cannot watch the session live on the City of Summit Facebook page, a video will be posted on the City of Summit YouTube channel later in the week. And secondly, I’m very happy to say that I have reinstated my office hours at City Hall on Mondays from 10 to noon and on Wednesdays from 10:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. No appointment is necessary, so please stop by if you would like to speak with me. My next monthly Meet the Mayor event, which I haven’t had in over a year and a half, will be held on Saturday, June 19, from 10:30 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at Batavia Cafe at 356 Springfield Avenue. I’m there with a little sign, stop by and chat about whatever it is you’d like to talk about. And then in July, I will be at the farmer’s market on DeForest Avenue from 10 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. on Sunday, July 11. I really appreciate being able to have these informal conversations with Summit residents and business owners, and I look forward to seeing you all around town. Additionally, while I have those office hours, indeed, certainly email me at nradis@cityofsummit.org at any time, and we can set up an appointment to get together, whether it be here at City Hall or someplace around town. So thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I believe we don’t have a city administrator’s room.
I’m going to have Mike tonight, but I don’t have anything today.
Okay, great. All right. So moving on, I just had one item for the President’s report. Over the past few years, Summit Public Art has installed a number of interesting, relevant, and lovely artworks throughout Summit. I particularly enjoy the glass house in the courtyard here at City Hall, and I know many other visitors do as well. Next Friday, June 18, Summit Public Art will be holding Illumination Night on the Village Green. A water and wine reception will begin at 7:00. Then there will be an art tour at 8:00 p.m., and lights on the Village Green begin at 9:00 p.m. We’ve received a few questions because balloons are being illuminated. And according to Summit Public Art, the balloons will not be filled with helium, and they will be attached to posts on the ground. They won’t be released. There were people who were concerned about the environmental impacts of this. The balloons will then be disposed of in an environmentally friendly manner. So thank you to Summit residents who voiced their concerns on this issue, and thank you to Summit Public Art for all they do to bring art to Summit. I think this should be a really wonderful evening, so I hope everyone will come out. And with that, we’ll move on to presentations. And we’ve got Carol Bianchi from JCPN-L to present tonight. Thank you for coming in tonight.
It’s a pleasure. So good evening. I’ll speak into the microphone.
You’re welcome to take your mask.
Oh, yes, thank you.
I’ll do that.
I’ll do that. So good evening to everybody, and please excuse my back for those who are in the audience. Thank you for inviting me here tonight, and I have a PowerPoint presentation that I’m going to show you, and I hope that it’s informative, and then I’d be happy to answer any questions you have. The first order of business is that this turned off the clicker, so I’m going to come to you, Rosemary, to show me how to turn it back on.
We had it all set up and ready to go. And we talked too long? We’re not familiar with the...
The first thing that I wanted to talk about is the service restoration process, because this is, even though most of you know about our process, it’s always good to review it. In fact, the Board of Public Utilities wants to make sure that all of the electric utilities are educating the customers and our officials about the restoration process well in advance of any storm. So the first thing that we need to do is to assess the damage, and this requires us to start at the top and work our way down. We need to isolate and make the situation safe, repairing high-voltage lines and restoring essential functions. Our hospitals and critical facilities certainly get priority, and then we work on the main feeder and distribution lines before we then turn to those areas or those outages that will restore the largest number of customers. And we keep going until we restore every single home. Much of this is happening simultaneously. While we’re restoring a hospital, for example, we’re restoring all the customers on that particular circuit. I want to talk about tree density in New Jersey. Trees are the number-one cause of outages, and we love our trees, but this is why we have a robust vegetation management program. As you can see here, this will show you the density of trees in the JCPN-L area. So if you see where the other electric companies are, PSENG cuts a swath through the middle. They are, you know, our friends at PSENG certainly have challenges, but not quite as many as we have with our density of trees in our areas, which are outlined in the red right there, and that correlates to our territory. I thought it would be good to mention that we do have preventative maintenance and inspection programs that occur on cycle for every single circuit. So just to dispel any notion that we’re sitting and waiting for the lights to go out to respond, we’re constantly checking our circuits. So we do our inspections on a five-year cycle. Our wood poles are inspected every 10 years. We perform thermography, which is a special kind of camera that will detect any kind of problems that are not visible to the eye, and we do that every four years. Our vegetation management occurs on a four-year cycle on all of our circuits. We’re removing the overhang on the main lines, and where we encounter a hazardous tree that is either dying, or if we were to remove too much of the limbs, which would affect the health of the tree, then we’ll work with the customer, the owner of the tree, to remove the entire tree, but we need their permission to remove it. And then we work on, we have reliability engineers who are constantly analyzing the circuits, and for those circuits that are not performing according to the standards that the BPU has set, we are coming up with improvements for those particular circuits. But we’re always looking to see if we have a high number of outages, and there’s a particular cause, what are the improvements that we can identify on that circuit to prevent, for example, tree-related outages or overload, that sort of thing. And just to show you, we do have a schedule. So this year, we’re going to be working on, I have some notes here, we’re going to be working, our vegetation management will be at the Bryant Park and Waverly substations. Our thermography will be on the Bryant Park circuits, and our underground inspections will be on the Trainer 37980. These are circuits that feed Summit. Infrastructure projects in Summit. We just completed a Summit reconductoring project, and we worked really well with your council and mayor and all parties. There was construction going on in the same area. We worked with the developers. We worked with Rita from the Parking Authority. Thank you, Rita. There was a lot of moving parts, and everybody really worked well together. So that project is complete, and we were very determined to get that done before the summer, and that is going to help the customers served out of the Summit Substation 33967 Circuit, and that serves about 762 customers. We’re working with Erin, your engineer, on vault upgrades. Again, we identified a problem. We had a problem with outages one time which affected the downtown, and we’re working to make some upgrades on the circuits, the vaults that are in downtown. I also wanted to talk about our Reliability Plus program, which we completed in 2020. That ran from mid-June 2019 through 2020. As part of that investment, we conducted an additional 13.45 miles of vegetation management in Summit alone, and that was in addition to our four-year cycle of tree maintenance. Again, when we do our vegetation management, we’re working closely with the municipality and our customers, because we respect the trees, but we don’t want them hanging over the wires and causing outages or falling on the wires, and we work within our right-of-way. Also, as part of the IIP, we did a project which was called a RTU. It’s a relay technology at the Summit Substation. It was damaged during ECAAS, and we made the repairs. We worked with the council to get the permits to make those repairs. And what this relay technology does is it enhances reliability with real-time power monitoring of distribution loads, voltage, and what they call power factor. And this enhances service restoration following any outages. I think we can move on to the next one. Okay. I wanted to talk a little bit about our responses after ECAAS, the tropical storm in August of 2020. Again, worked closely with our municipalities and our customers to gain a lot of feedback. Worked with our legislators, the Board of Public Utilities. It was truly a collaborative effort, and we incorporated a lot of that feedback, and Mayor Radis was always on the phone, you know, advocating for the residents, as were others in Summit, and we rely upon that feedback to make improvements, and I truly believe that some significant improvements were made. So I’ll just briefly review some of those. We’re working on a new estimated time of restoration process. This is something that is a source of frustration for people. In ECAAS, we established a global ETR after the storm had exited the territory, and that is something that we’re required to do pursuant to the Board of Public Utilities order. The global ETR is basically when all customers, when we anticipate all customers will be restored based upon the extent of the damage. So after we’ve completed our damage assessment, we issue a global ETR. We assign more specific ETRs when we have a crew assigned to a particular circuit, working on it, and we have an evaluation of how long that will take to restore. But that can frustrate customers, because until that crew is assigned to your outage, you will have that global, and you won’t know whether to go to a hotel or whether, you know, when the ETR is going to change. So we’re trying, it’s a very difficult science, but we’re working to try to establish more granular ETRs so fewer customers will receive the global ETR. Those customers who receive the global ETR will hopefully be those who are, as I showed you on the storm restoration process, the smaller-density areas. Unfortunately, someone has to be last, but it’s usually those who don’t have a lot of customers on the circuit. Let’s see, what else? We’ve upgraded, there were some concerns about the text messaging and the reverse phone calls about power restoration. So we’ve updated our script in the text message and the reverse phone call to allow customers to provide better feedback as to whether their power is still out or whether they’re unaware if they’re out of power because they’re, for example, not home. So they can indicate that and provide feedback to us. I’ll digress for a second and tell you that JCPN-L has an application pending before the Board of Public Utilities for smart meters, and that is going to give us a lot more information and help us with storm restoration, and that will be coming. But in the meantime, we’re relying upon feedback from our customers. The ice and water program, we are expanding upon it. We have a retail ice and water program for our customers where you can go to grocery stores that participate with us. We’re expanding that to partner with our counties to help distribute ice and water where the retail stores won’t have sufficient supply. We’re enhancing our education on the storm restoration process, as mentioned before. We always incorporate that into our discussions, but we’re making certain that we do that so that everyone knows how it works. We’ve instituted a quarterly newsletter for our officials. That’s something new. We’re working on a public official’s handbook for all JCPN-L resources. This will be particularly useful for new officials. We invited our local OEMs to the annual BPU OEM county meeting, and we had a number attend the meeting for Union County, and Summit emergency coordinators were there as well. During events, we’re going to have more regional calls with our public officials so that we can really focus on your territory rather than giving you a broad discussion of what’s going on with the storm. And we’ve actually implemented that already, and that worked quite well during the winter storm of Christmas, if you recall. There’s a number of things we’re doing, so I’ll just mention a couple others. We had a conference of mayors with JCPN-PSENG to talk further about, you know, how we can all work together and about storm restoration. We’re upgrading our banner on our My Towns page to provide information on ice and water and restoration during major events. And I’ll just end it with social media. We really do have a great social media presence, but not everybody uses social media. I prefer email. So we are boosting, we’re trying to boost customer participation in social media, but we’re also working on our emails, and that’s something Mayor Radis has brought to my attention that would be really helpful for those who rely upon email. We may as well brag about some good things, too, that we’re receiving recognition for, and one of them is we’re very proud of our values at JCPN-L, and I mean that wholeheartedly. We’re proud of our D&amp;I values, our diversity and inclusion, as well as our environmental initiatives. So we’ve received awards for that, for our workforce diversity and inclusion, and from, also, we’ve been recognized by the Commerce and Industry Association and Commerce Magazine for our environmental leadership in the areas of recycling and pollution prevention. And here are some tools for customers that we just love to remind everybody about. We have the 24/7 Power Center, and we also have a My Towns page, which will give you specific information about Summit. So we encourage everyone to go there. Our text messaging feature, which I use, is very good because you can get status updates on your phone as to, you know, the status of crews and the estimated time of restoration. And here are some important phone calls, phone numbers. We like to remind you of the 888 lights. You can also report it on the website, or for all types of service, an overhanging tree limb, any type of thing, a street light out, you can call that 800 number anytime. And that’s it for my presentation, so I would now like to turn it to the mayor and council if you have any questions for me.
Okay, so while we’ll open it up, Councilmember Barton, go ahead.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Carol. I really appreciate getting this update. I’m thankful for you taking the time to come to this meeting this evening. It’s going to rain tonight, possibly very high winds, thunderstorms. So the last very severe storm we had, we got an email as a customer of PSENG, even though they’re not our power provider, they’re natural gas, that we could experience power outages. It was helpful, basically warned the crews were ready, who to contact, and then had some helpful tips about charging your devices as well. So earlier today, we got the email from JCPN-L saying roughly the same thing, not as a customer, though, but rather as an elected official. So I feel grateful for that information, but I think that it unfairly puts the onus on the city to communicate with JCPN-L customers on behalf of the company. So my question is, is JCPN-L, why can’t JCPN-L send exactly what was sent to us, to every customer directly to their email?
Yes, good question, and that is something that I talked with your mayor about this evening. So yes, we did communicate with you. We also do communicate. I did not check social media before I came here, but I would be surprised if we don’t have something on social media. But again, that’s why I mentioned before that we want to also provide that information to our customers via email, and so that is something that we’re working on as well.
Okay. And I have a second question. So my understanding is that the moratorium on utility shut-offs will end July 1, but that there’s some sort of a grace period until December 31. So do you know how many Summit residents will have to enroll in some sort of a payment plan or how that will work?
No, that is directly, the customer will contact us for any type of assistance that they need, and we’re really happy. We’ve got a great team that will work with them to come up with a plan that will work for them. And if anybody has any questions, we have all that information on our website as to how to, oh, and I hear the thunder.
There it is.
I literally, I have a great team. I literally texted my comrades.
Clearly you do, Carol.
And I said to them, “Cover me for the next hour. I’ll cover you at 8:30. I won’t tell them if I get out early.” But no, in all seriousness, they are covering me right now because I don’t want anybody waiting to hear from me if they’re out of power. So back to you. And we’re going to work with our customers. I could not tell you, because the customers contact JCPN-L, and they have those resources that they can utilize, and we’ll work with them to help them.
Okay. But people won’t have electricity shut off before December of this year?
I’d have to check what the rules, the rules are always changing, and the moratorium can always be extended.
Okay.
So it’s a constantly changing process. Obviously, the state has, you know, makes a determination on that as well.
Okay.
But we are always happy to work with our customers to keep their lights on.
Thank you.
You’re welcome.
Are there any other comments from members of council? Councilmember, no, that’s okay. Councilmember Naidoo, go ahead.
I’ll defer to that.
No, that’s okay.
Okay. I just wanted to thank you, Carol, for coming in. You know, we’ve had behind-the-scenes, the mayor, the council president, Councilwoman Allen, myself have had numerous conversations with you about what’s been going on with regard to upgrades with JCPN-L, and we thought it was very important for you to come in as Councilman Barton. You know, this is the season when we start having storms on cue, and then we will have, we’re expecting a major, a lot of hurricanes this season, another active hurricane season, but it’s important for residents to understand the improvements that are made by the utility as well as the kind of what limitations are from the city’s perspective, what the limitations are from JCPN-L’s perspective. We all have to recognize when the storm happens, there’s a lot of moving parts that people have to manage and deal with, and everything’s not going to go perfectly at any given point in time. But I think seeing the improvements, whether it be both the technology, the infrastructure improvements, as well as the communications, I think is very important. And I assume that your presentation will be available for residents on the city’s website, right?
Yeah, yes, we can share that. I just need to get it approved, which I’m sure anybody could have taken a snapshot.
Exactly.
I’m sure it will be approved, and we’ll send it to you for publication.
That would be great, because for those residents who are able to come in, they can look through at least and see the numbers are there, there’s more information there. So thank you. By the way, is this the, is this the first in-person, you’ve been doing this in 2021?
I think so, yes. Yes.
Well, thank you for coming in.
You’re welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Little, and then we’ll go to you, Councilmember Allen.
Yes, thank you, Carol. That was a great presentation. I just wanted to circle back to the vegetative management program, and you discussed, and I’m aware, working on capital projects, that you do this maintenance regularly and that you’ve done a stepped-up program over the last year or two since ECAAS. But many of the trees that fall and cause these power outages are not in the right-of-way. Is that correct? They’re private?
Correct. Particularly during ECAAS, many were outside the right-of-way, so yeah.
So I just wanted to make clear that, because that was a common misperception during the storm, and to encourage anyone who’s listening to, you know, maintain your trees, get them checked, because a lot of the outages that happened during that storm were from, it was my understanding as well, I’m glad you confirmed that, were from private trees.
That’s correct. So we really do need the cooperation, but let’s face it, it’s expensive to take trees down.
Yep.
And it doesn’t give you quite as much satisfaction as redoing your kitchen, for example. So there’s a little reluctance there. You just hope that tree isn’t going to fall over on your house or the power lines, but it’s really important. And we’ve been working with the mayor on collaborating on tree removals, so we’re going to continue to do that.
Great, thank you.
You’re welcome.
And then if you have any information on, anything that we could share on social media or push out to the public on the moratorium and the ways that they can work with JCPN-L, that would be really helpful, because we’d be happy to do that.
Absolutely. Yeah, we have a lot of information on our website, but I’ll gather that together, and I’ll send it to you so you can put it on the website.
Exactly, that’d be great. Thank you.
Right. You’re welcome.
Councilmember Little, again, Allen, go ahead. Thank you, Council President. Hi, Carol, it’s good to see you tonight.
Hi, thank you.
Thanks for your presentation. Just a little bit interesting tidbit of information. When somebody’s walking down the street and they see a leaning pole, I just was hoping that you could share with everybody, because not everyone knows this, who should they call? Is it automatically your pole, Verizon?
Oh, thank you for asking that question, yes. So the poles, we own about half of them, and Verizon owns about the other half, and then occasionally you’ll have an old pole that might be Century Link’s pole. We’ve had that happen. So you can always call JCPN, well, the way you can identify it is if you can rely upon the tag, because sometimes the letters might fall off. But our poles are preceded by JC or NJ, and Verizon’s will be BT, what used to be Bell Telephone. But sometimes, as I said, the numbers might be, the letters might come off, and then people don’t, so call us at 800-662-3115, report it. We’ll work with Verizon, or if it’s their pole. We work together.
Okay, any other comments from members of council?
I just want to say thank you, Carol. You’re very responsive. Even tonight, I called you, I knew you were coming here this evening, but I thought I just had to make this phone.
Thank you, mayor.
So I appreciate it, and you responded to the time. So, you know, there’s a lot. There’s a lot of moving pieces here, and we’ll get there.
That’s right. Thank you, everyone. It’s a pleasure.
So I’m going to open it up to the public.
Okay, yeah, that’s fine.
That’s okay.
Sure.
So can any members of the public have any comments on, or questions for Carol Bianchi about JCPN-L and power outages only? Okay? You can step up and state your name and address, and we’re going to hold everyone to three minutes, just because Carol has a storm to deal with.
Hopefully not. Hopefully it’s going to pass right by.
Yeah, that’s what I hope.
Andrew Miles, M.I.L.E.S., 144 Broad Street in Summit. My question is about the infrared scans you do every four years. What is the reason why that’s done every four years? Because you said that it involves, people will see things that can’t be seen readily with the naked eye.
Right. So basically, we just have a schedule of inspections, but certainly when there’s any problems, if we have an outage, when we have a storm like ECAAS, we’re sweeping the whole circuit. So we’re performing all of that post-storm because the system can be weakened and we want to fortify it. But other than that, we just have to keep on a schedule of inspections. There’s just not the opportunity to do routine inspections every year, but we do them what is deemed acceptable by the Board of Public Utilities, what’s recommended.
Thank you.
You’re welcome.
Any other questions or comments from members of the public? We have one right in.
Yes, Council President, we have one that was received by email from Ryan Felmit. Carol, he has a couple of question and comments here. The first one is undergrounding of wires. From what he understands, you personally cover multiple New Jersey municipalities in the region. Has any other municipality approached JCPN-L in regards to performing an analysis on putting wires and certain infrastructure underground? And can you please shed some light on this, and if you would be, if it would be something the City of Summit could explore, if the city is interested?
Yes, the answer is yes. We have been approached for an analysis of undergrounding. What that entails is the committee or What that entails is the committee or council approval to request a design, and that would require a design fee. So based upon the scope of that request, JCPN L would provide a design fee, and then we would go forward with the design. Most municipalities have not, we haven't been approached because the estimated costs are exorbitant. And when you already have existing overhead, to then, what you call strand all of that, abandon it, and then start anew, placing all new wiring underground, there's the cost to JP, from JCPN L, but there's also the cost from all the communication wires, if you also want to get rid of the poles and the wires. I could, I could talk about this probably for another couple hours, because I've studied it a lot. And in fact, in response to the Board of Public Utilities' order after ECAES, we did a study of a few circuits to come up with a cost, and we concluded that while there are some benefits in some areas, particularly those areas that are susceptible to the tree outages, the costs far outweigh the benefits. So that's, that information is available on the BPU website for anybody who wants to read our analysis. There's also studies that have been done before we did our own analysis, but yeah. So I don't even want to throw out a number, but it is usually just not, not cost effective, particularly in a very developed area. If you're talking about a downtown, that's where it's going to be most expensive. If you have a brand-new development, actually, any new brand-new development that's not been developed must be underground. The developer will have to put the, everything underground. I live in one of such area, but you're still fed overhead. See, I told you I could talk about this for hours. So you're still vulnerable farther out, but there are some benefits, yeah. I hope that answers the question.
Okay. The second question is similar to the above question on undergrounding wires. Can you please share any other improvements that municipalities within the JCPN L territory, or more specific, especially your coverage area, are looking at, and help us understand any differences in improvements being requested or done between Summit and other towns? Or is it strictly a uniform approach that is being taken across all regions in terms of updating infrastructure, equipment, and things such as smart meters?
Right. So the best answer I can give to that is, again, we have these reliability engineers, and that is what they do every day. They study the circuits. What is going on with this circuit? What is going on with the transmission lines, if there's been transmission-related outages? What improvements do we need to do? So it's not a one-size-fits-all, it's based upon the cause of the outages and the history on that circuit. So, but there's no, you know, when you talk about, other than the undergrounding, which the former question was about, and the smart meters, that's going to be uniform. I don't think anybody's missing anything in Summit. I think your council and your mayor are on top of it, and anything, anything innovative or that needs to be done is being addressed.
Okay. And the last is regarding the BPU audit. What is the status of the New Jersey BPU audit of JCPN L? Please provide any details that you are aware of, including the timeline and scope of the audit.
So we're complying with the audit, we're working on it. I was working on it today, lending a hand, so yeah, we're complying. And as far as when the responses will be filed, I don't have that information, but I can certainly get back to you on that.
What's the status of the audit, I mean, in terms of the BPU website? What can people, if someone wanted to know about, is that on the website yet, or will it be?
I'm not sure what's on the website about the audit, but certainly whatever is public information can be shared, so I will share that with you, Mayor.
Okay.
Whatever I can share with you, you can certainly share with everyone.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Are there any other comments or questions before we close this up? All right, thank you, Carol, so much for doing this.
You're welcome.
We really appreciate you coming in.
My pleasure. Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.
I hope you have a big number, Carol.
I did, I do, I did bring it.
It's really coming down.
I really did remember it. Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Rosemary, for your help with the technology.
So with that, we'll move on to public comments. So at this point in the meeting, we'll, members of the public will have the opportunity to comment on any matter that's not on the agenda. And anyone who would like to make a comment, you can come up, state your name and your address, and you have three minutes to speak. And when you're making your comment, you're free to take your mask off, but otherwise, I'd ask you to keep your masks on, please. And I guess we'll take the first commenter.
I apologize, my glasses are broken, but they still work. Robert Osborne, O-S-B-O-R-N-E, 55 Madison Avenue, Summit here. 25-year resident. My question to the group is, what is the current status of the BMS noise pollution? I'm a 25-year resident. We've experienced SIBA, sharing plow, Merck, Celgene, and now currently Bristol-Myers Squibb. And previously, all these companies have been great neighbors. We've had no issues. And it's funny, when I moved here, it was, I was worried about it, and it was as if they were never there until the last couple of years. And a lot of the neighbors are very upset, and I just think it's important that everyone's aware of that. We, it's just something that we're not used to. I would respectfully ask that all of you like the Magic Fountain, support it, get an ice cream, come down, park your car on either Kent Place Boulevard or Madison Avenue at night, and listen to this. It's not, it's bad during the day, but it's worse at night. Unfortunately, I, like many people in this room, had COVID. I laid in my room with the window shut, and I could hear the building. So it's something, you know, it's, you're just not used to it. So I just respectfully ask that the committee just look at this, and just understand that it's something, as a neighborhood, we're not used to. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Osborne. We are aware of it, we've been engaging with BMS, and we, you know, we have had a number of conversations with BMS and the neighbors as well about this issue. And, you know, we know that it is an issue, it's just not an easily solved one unless BMS comes to the table to work with us on it. And, you know, we've, we've spoken to them, but the, you know, the goal is to get everyone together, including the residents and BMS, to all work together to address this. So unless anyone wants to add anything else on this topic, I'll take the next comment. Yes, go ahead.
I'm just, thank you, Council President. I'm just curious if we've isolated where that noise is coming from, and what kind of noise it is.
That's part of the problem, I think we have not. Yeah, okay. So are there any other comments?
Hello, Andy Miniger, 15 Edgar Street. Thank you for your time tonight. I wanted to thank Councilmember Naidu for the recent update you sent on Broad Street West redevelopment plan. It answered a ton of questions that I had, I, especially from that last preview to the community. I did have a couple more, if that's okay, I just asked him, if I'm allowed.
Through me?
Yes.
Yes.
So in your summary, you mentioned that the redevelopment committee's new focus is on Sub District 3, that will potentially have about 120 to 135 units, rental units. I'm curious about two things. If that means that the subsection 3 is likely to be the first portion of that redevelopment plan that will be completed, and also what percentage of the overall plans diversified housing options will be contained in subsection 3 alone?
So yes, subsection 3 will be the first one that will be started, so I assume it will be the first one finished, although you never know. And that is where the majority of the housing will be, and where the workforce and affordable housing will be.
Okay.
There will be a small number of units on Sub District 2, but most will be Sub 3.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome. Does anyone have anything else to add on that topic? Good? Okay. Any other comments? Come on up.
Marcus McNamara, M-C-N-A-M-A-R-A, 7 Irving Place, and my questions are about the gas leaf blower ban. What is the metric of the pass fail of this ban? What is the information that's going to be gathered to either say this is a viable thing or not? I just have a bunch of questions, I'll run through them and I'll be done. Will there be a broader initiative to ban more or other machines other than gas-powered leaf blowers? There's a town in Newton, Massachusetts that had the exact same ban. Within the first few months, they had 320 complaints to the police department, 75% of those that called were on people that were actually following the rules of the ban, or for lawn mowers, and 50% of those calls were initiated by 15, the same 15 people. So they actually had to hire another code enforcement officer to enforce that, that ban. Will the city hire another employee if this goes down that route, and how much will that cost? Will Denofrio, the subcontracted landscaper for the lawn maintenance and field maintenance here in Summit, raise their prices to compensate for the electric-powered mowers that they're going to have to purchase to do their job? And will the taxpayers take on that burden? Will the dump have a certain area for lithium battery disposal, and how much will that Have any other council members looked for another compromise of this issue to satisfy more people who are against this ban? And lastly, my 16-year-old son is cutting lawns this summer. He works with me in my painting business, and on the weekends, he cuts lawns. He's a straight A student, he has three AP classes, he can't do it at any time of the year. I bought him a gas-powered leaf blower before any of this ban happened, so he could do this job to make money to buy his first car and build a computer he wants to build. So I'm out the $500, or he gets fined $100, $250, or $500 on the third occurrence. And has anybody else looked into a compromise of a muffler or something? And that's all I got. Thanks for letting me share.
So thank you for your comments, Mr. McNamara. I can hit a few of them, and then I can hand it over to you, Councilmember Little.
Sure, I'm happy to take them with you.
Okay. So I'm going to let you handle the metrics on the ban. Will there be a broader initiative to ban, to ban other equipment? No, there is no plan to do that.
Ever.
I mean, I can't say ever, but we have no immediate plan.
None of these people sits up here.
Yeah, we have no plan.
No, it's more.
Okay. As far as Denofrio raising their prices, Denofrio is located in Maplewood, and much of their business is in Maplewood, and to my understanding, they don't use gas, they don't use leaf blowers in the summer. They're able to do their job using other equipment, so they will not be purchasing leaf blowers, electric leaf blowers, they'll be using other equipment and not gas-powered equipment. And they'll comply with the ban, and they will not be charging us extra. We already accept lithium batteries at the transfer station for recycling, and as far as, so the rest of them, I'll turn over to you, Councilmember Little.
Sure. We've been asked a lot about the metrics for measuring this. I mean, we're going to, we're going to use the same metrics we use to measure anything that we pass in the city and see if it's working. I'm going to use as an example, we did a pilot program last summer to close Maple Street for the restaurants, because the restaurants had asked us to do that. It was a pilot program, we see how it goes, we got community feedback, we looked at how it was working, we looked at the complaints we got, we talked to the business owners, and we decided it was very successful, and we continued it. It's still a pilot program, we continued it through the end of this year, we're going to see how traffic, you know, is impact, you know, what kind of complaints we get as traffic kind of goes back to normal, and life goes back to normal, if that's something we want to continue or not. So the kind of metrics that we use to evaluate this program are going to be the same kind of metrics we use to evaluate anything that we do in the city. And that's talking to residents, talking to business owners, getting feedback, you know, and seeing if it's, if we think it's working. So there aren't any special metrics for this program. I'll agree with Council President Fox that we are not looking at banning any other equipment. This equipment, we have stated many times, has particular characteristics that make it problematic, and that make it, made it, you know, feasible to do this ban, that we had gotten lots of complaints. I don't, I don't know how to address your complaints from Newton, Massachusetts, we're not Newton, Massachusetts. I think Aaron Schreger.
Excuse me, you're, Councilmember Little speaking now.
Roger.
Newton, Massachusetts is not Summit, so I don't know really how to compare those. I think that we have had some complaints, they've all been addressed. We've had some requests for exemptions, those have been addressed, so it's certainly not overwhelming anyone. If Director Schreger wants to add to that after I'm done, he's welcome to. Denofrio does work, landscaping does work mostly in Maplewood. They told us they have been subject to the ban for several years and have not purchased any new equipment, any new electric blowers or anything, they are able to complete their jobs with the equipment they have. They said that the summer months, the leaf blowers were, they felt were less necessary, and they were able to use other equipment. As far as do we look into compromises, I would say this is clearly a compromise, the ban that is in place right now. As we stated in many of the other meetings, there were many, many residents who contacted us to ask for longer bans and for permanent bans on these machines. Instead of doing that, we came up with a solution where we talked to the stakeholders involved, we talked to people who are clearly against the ban to get their point of view, we talked to lots of people, we did a lot of research, and we did come up with this compromise. This is the compromise, because people are asking us to permanently ban these machines and to do something about the noise, and we came up with a compromise to do it for a three-month trial period. And then after talking to the residents and hearing all the public comments, we also added an exemption process where people could come to us and, and talk to us about any specific issues that they might have, and ask for, you know, an exemption and work with us on that. So we are going, and then we also did the fine structure in a way that is also a compromise, because the first violation is a warning, so that we could educate people and talk to people without impacting them negatively. And then there's a graduated fine structure to allow for that. So this is a compromise between all the people that are asking us to please do something about the noise and the pollution, and our very real concern about the businesses and the residents operating in the town, so that, we are at the compromise point of the discussion with this trial ban. And, you know, your son, I have two, I have two high school kids, I have two college kids, they all work. I very much appreciate that he wants to do the, you know, work hard and do this. Unfortunately, this is a ban that, you know, we, we did look at this compromise, this is what we came up with. If he would like to apply for the hardship exemption, I'm sure Director Schreger will look at that and see if there's anything, you know, that would qualify for hardship exemption. I can't say, based on what you said right now, whether it would or not, but, you know, he is welcome, as anyone is, to apply for a hardship exemption, and Director Schreger will work with him. I hope that answered all your questions.
Okay. With the next person who wants to comment, come on forward.
Good evening, everybody. Abe Casbo, 253 Kent Place Boulevard. I'm talking, I'd like to talk about the Bristol-Myers Squibb noise issue. Mayor, thank you so much for getting back to me, we talked last week. Lisa, thanks for coming down yesterday, and I know Councilman Naidu and I have been furiously on email. I just want to clarify something. The neighborhood and the neighbors have been willing to meet with BMS from day one, and we have no idea what's going on. I spoke with one of the residents yesterday, and she's been trying to email them, because there might have been a possibility that things have gotten better at one point, and to kind of let them know, and nobody's responding. But the fact of the matter is, it's actually gotten worse, right? And you have an entire neighborhood that's basically being held hostage to this, about 250 homes in that area. And if you've looked at the, at the map that's on Facebook, where we've dropped pins of people who, you know, reported being disturbed, I mean, that's a pretty disturbing thing to look at. The, this issue has been on the The, this issue has been on the books as far as I could tell with Summit since December 17th, 2018. And, I mean, people are tired. I was up at 3:30 on Sunday. And I, I'm just tired, like, I can't call the cops anymore. I'm tired. People are tired. This is a public health issue. We really need your help to solve this. Bring these people to the table. Let's talk about it and let's get it done. If at all possible, we should hire an outside expert. And we've done research, somebody who's completely independent of us and that can come in and say, here's the issue, here's how we fix it. This is a public health issue now. I mean, I, not that I need any more sleep, but I need to sleep. And I would really appreciate your help in getting a full night's sleep. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Casbo. I know, I know this is very difficult and I, and we all, we all sympathize. And, you know, I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Nidu because I think he's eager to say something.
Well, Abe, you and I have talked multiple times and emailed numerous times, as well as I've been in touch with some of the other folks, obviously. Look, I think, I speak for all of us. We're very frustrated, all of us, as to how this has turned out. It is very atypical. I can speak for myself on this. I think it's very atypical for any corporate entity in this town to simply not engage in trying to help resolve a situation. And that's the frustration that we have on our end, that typically, you know, the thing is, you want to get everybody sitting around in a room at a table and saying, okay, this is what we're doing, this is our schedule, this is the reasons why this noise is going to occur for this limited period of time and then it's going to be over or something. But not having anybody to interact with from our side and having to go do an enforcement action, which is a totally unusual way that we have to engage with them, is extremely unfortunate. But all I can say is, I think from all of us, is that we will be as creative as possible. We'll talk to you guys. We're happy, I mean, all of us, I think, are happy, I'm certainly happy, I know, to sit down with you guys, come up, I think, a suggestion you were just making. I think we need to brainstorm collectively as to what is a reasonable mechanisms that we could try to pursue, given where BMS is just sitting. And it's just, we have to think outside the box a little bit here. But this, you know, this is not probably the right forum to do all of that. And we need to have a sit-down-around-the-table kind of discussion. But I'm happy to participate in something like that.
Councilmember Little.
Thank you. In addition, or as part of my council duties, I also sit on the planning board. As I know you know, Mr. Casbo, it's nice to see you in person. We've seen each other for many, many, many hours on Zoom meetings and spent a lot of time together that way. So I just wanted to reiterate that in addition to council addressing this issue, the planning board is also extremely concerned about the noise issue. And as you know, in order to get approval for their recent requested construction, there were a number of mitigation efforts on the noise and noise studies that needed to be completed to do that. And any further construction would be contingent on those as well. So we will continue to use the, all the, you know, all the tools we have in that toolkit as well to try to address this. But as Councilmember Nidu said, it's very frustrating for all of us as well because we, we are, we are running into some walls here.
May I just say?
Let the mayor speak.
Go ahead, Susan.
Oh, no, no, you can go first. I just wanted to make sure Marjorie something.
Yeah, yeah, I see.
Abe, we've spoken multiple times over the last many months. This is not a simple answer. And, and as you know, they have, BMS has done certain things. They put a new air conditioning unit on the S7 building. They fabricated baffles to minimize the noise coming from that air conditioning. They haven't just ordered those things. Those things are, have been installed. Part of the problem is that you're not able to have a conversation with them because they're not coming to the table. So it becomes adversarial. I think we all want things to happen, but as we've discussed, the city is limited, frankly, in what we can do relative to the ordinance. We have tried, we are trying, I have been trying, as you know. We had our six o'clock, 6:30 Saturday night meeting. We want to make this work. They, we want them to be good neighbors. We want them to be successful, but not at the expense of you and your fellow residents in that neighborhood. I would like everyone to come together and have some kind of a conversation that makes things work. But I'll be honest with you, there's, just a minute, sir. It's only, you know, the city is limited by the law. So we will do whatever we can to help facilitate this, but we cannot mandate BMS to do something that is not violating an ordinance. So we're not done. We're still trying. Everyone at this dais is very sincere about trying to make this work. And of course, given the restrictions and the difficulties of COVID, have made it very hard to get anything done quickly in the city. And that goes from, you know, in the schools to parks, to everything in business. It's been, it's been a ridiculously complicated year, but we're not giving up.
Councilmember Hairston, did you have something to add?
I do, thank you, Council President, and thank you, Mayor Radis. And Abe, I'm also glad to meet you in person now because I was at the meeting with you that the mayor convened and shared with you our ideas about how to work with BMS. And I want to make sure you know, as your Lowell Avenue resident, I am aware because until I actually walked on Madison and on Kent Place, which I had been doing for, I thought, all of the time, until I stopped and listened, I didn't, I didn't hear it. And then I did hear it. And now I can't not hear it. So I understand what you're going through and the difficulty that we're experiencing with a new multinational corporation being in town, knowing how to be a good citizen. And it seems like we're, you're hearing the same old thing from the same companies, but there are new actors at the table. And I want to thank Aaron and his staff for doing the enforcement that they've done. And just, it's, it doesn't help that you're still experiencing it. But I want you to know that we are all aware of it. And as your neighbor, I am personally invested in it as well because it is disturbing to us. And so we will stick with it. And because they have said to us, they want to be a good neighbor. I see construction going on there. And so I don't know if they think it's, well, they did say to us, they think it is going to be, make a difference, but it's going to take time. So I just want you to know that it is not falling on deaf ears, which is not a good analogy to make here, but we hear you.
Councilmember Allen.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. I just wanted to say it was nice to meet you and your neighbors the other day. I did hear it. It wasn't overwhelming, but it was during the day. And to your point, it's like one of those noises, it's a constant hum. And so at night, I could see how that would be problematic. I've had conversations with the mayor and a few of you and the administrator on the dais and everybody is earnestly trying to solve this. So I think as we discuss, you know, quality of life, noise pollution, no matter what it looks or sounds like, is, certainly affects our lives and the way that we enjoy our lifestyle here. So I don't know what the answer is, but I certainly appreciate you reaching out. And I know that Susan is right and the mayor is right, that we'll continue to work on this. So we just want to give you that, so.
So, okay. So we, we, you know, we recognize the problems that are going on. But unfortunately, as the mayor said, we're very limited in what we can do because they're not violating the noise ordinance. You know, when we've measured it, it hasn't been a violation. There may have been, you know, a few limited instances, but, you know, but a lot of this time, they're not. And that's, you know, so there, there is that difficulty. It's, it's very hard to enforce and we have very limited enforcement powers under our noise ordinance as well. So we will continue to work on ways to address this. But please keep in touch with us and we will, you know, we'll take this offline and work with you on this topic, okay? So I'm going to now ask the next person to come on up. You know, anyone who wants.
Hello, Delia Hamlet from 11 Brantwood. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council President Fox, and fellow council members. Thank you for your time tonight. I just have a few questions, most of them regarding the last topics we have just talked about. But I was wondering how much money and manpower from lawyer fees we have spent on the gas-powered leaf blower ban versus the BMS issue? I know there's not an answer we can have for that tonight, but that's one of the things that I was wondering. The second thing I was wondering is how many complaints there have been for the BMS issue versus the gas-powered leaf blower ban? The third question I have is, is there an ad hoc committee? I truly don't know the answer on the BMS noise issue. The fourth question I have is how many landscapers have felt a sense of inadequacy or been embarrassed over this ban and felt that they could not speak up because they are afraid they were not going to get residents to use their services? Maybe just by a show of hands in the back, you could let us know.
You know what, Ms. Hamlet, that's not appropriate. We don't poll the audience or council members. That's against council rules.
No problem, understood. Fifth question, has there been an update on any of the Hobart car burglaries? I've been in touch with Mayor Radis. She's kindly been helpful regarding some of us having problems with the Nixle system. A lot of us are getting the emails, but we're not getting the texts. And I know that the communications officer has actually looked at mine personally. But I have about 40 or 50 examples of people who aren't getting the text message. I've actually been in touch with Nixle today as well. And I'm beating my head against a wall because I can't figure it out. And I'm not sure what the issue is. It's maybe something we have to work on. But there are a lot of people who are getting emails and not texts and all of our settings are correct. I know that there's an, it's the Everbridge system as well, and I'm just not sure, so.
I'm sorry, is it a what system?
It's the, I think it's the Everbridge system. That, that's the system that's on top of it. And something's just not working because I know that 30 or 40 of us didn't get the text message, even though all of our systems, Chief Bartolotti had some ideas on maybe downloading the app and stuff. But I just want to let you know that it is a little bit of a problem because a lot of us didn't get the runaway text on Saturday night, but we got the emails, even though all our settings are correct. And then the last thing I just wanted to ask is, where do we stand on the hybrid meetings? The hybrid meetings, if we've made any progress on that?
So that's a long list of questions.
Okay. So we'll just answer, I'll answer the Nixle question.
Yep.
Because I was working with Amy, with you today. You know, it's a subscriber-based system, right? So that unlike Swift Reach, we can go in to Swift Reach and look up all everybody's information and be able to know what's accurate, what's not. We don't have that opportunity with Nixle. So you have to, it's got to be the subscriber has to contact, and you did. You say contact to customer service. I'll talk to Amy tomorrow, see what we can, if there's anything else we can figure out. But I, I, I'm sort of at a loss. We can't get, we can't access your information.
Right. I was just thinking, maybe if we do a test system for everybody that thinks they're subscribed, then we can all see who actually is, is working for.
I don't think there's a way to do that. I've spoken to the communications officer. I mean, it would have to be citywide.
Well, exactly right. You just send out a text that says, "Nixle text." And then if you didn't get it, you know it's not working.
Let me speak, Chief Bartolotti will be back in town tomorrow. He's been out of town for a couple of days. Let me speak with him.
Sure, no problem.
Because the Nixle goes out to the police.
Okay, you know, we're not going to have a conversation back and forth.
No, but I'm just saying, I'll look into it tomorrow.
Okay. So in answer to your other questions, a lot of these questions are questions we can't answer. How many, how much money from lawyer's fees? As far as I know, we have not spent money on lawyer's fees on either of those items. How many complaints, I can't answer for you. I don't know offhand. We can find out. There isn't, what we call, we're not calling it an ad hoc committee, but there has certainly been a lot of council involvement with BMS meetings.
There's no committee.
There's no committee. You know, the mayor and I and Councilmember Nidu, Councilmember Hairston have all met with BMS and most of us, I think I'm the only one who hasn't met with the residents as well. So there is no actual ad hoc committee. And Hobart, I think we're going to have to wait till Chief Bartolotti comes back to answer questions about that. So we'll get back to you on the other questions, okay?
Sure.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Ms. Hamlet, you mentioned Hobart car robberies.
Yes, yes, sir.
Have, has there been recent car robberies in Hobart?
There's attempted, yes.
A recent attempted car robbery?
A car entering, an individual entering a property in an attempt to get into a vehicle, yes.
Okay.
It was, I believe it was Friday or Saturday.
Great, okay, thank you for, no, thanks, appreciate it.
You're welcome to join my text chain.
A what?
You're welcome to join my text chain, my community text chain. We'll put you on there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hamlet. Any other comments from members of the public? Mr. Weck, come on up.
Robert Weck, CC3 River Road. There's been a lot of talk about littering. Downtown's been covered with litter. And a lot of residents are stepping up and I think yesterday Village Green, during the week, other residents have stepped up. So I was just wondering, is the city looking to do maybe some kind of campaign, public campaign about the, you know, littering? And/or will DPW maybe step up more patrols, for lack of a better word, downtown to kind of combat all this litter?
So my understanding, I'm going to ask Mr. Schreger if he'd like to. He's given me a little bit of information on that topic.
Yes, through you, Council President. Currently, what we do downtown is Mondays and Fridays. We, everything is blown out to the street and we do have the street sweeper come through to get the litter that we do collect. We also have assigned a DPW individual uptown now to collect some of the litter that is been reported. The biggest challenge we're finding is, one is the abundance of use of the downtown with the outdoor seating and things getting a little bit back to normal. And is the restaurants themselves are putting a lot of garbage bags out overnight, not in containers. So we did, about a week ago, we sent enforcement out to remind all the restaurants, especially ones who do have current outdoor seating licenses, to, a reminder of how to handle the trash. And so we did a campaign there and we did receive four phone calls today of restaurants calling saying, okay, what do I have to do? Because they did acknowledge that some of the bags going out, not containerized, are being raided by rodents and that's creating some of the litter we have. So, so we are on it. If we need to add more, we will, we will do it. But I think with us, with the campaign to the restaurants and having the extra personnel up there should greatly assist.
Thank you, Mr. Schreger. This has been, you know, a lot of this is just personal responsibility.
Absolutely.
We look to everyone to do this. And, you know, and it's not that litter is new. I mean, that's the reason for the past 12, 13 years, we've been doing Earth Day cleanups because people do sadly litter and we find some really disgusting stuff. And this isn't new, but I think masks and gloves, you know, that, maybe gloves less so now, but I think there are a lot of people, you know, with disposable masks and things that end up unfortunately being dumped. And, you know, I would urge everyone to clean up after yourselves and pick up. And, you know, thank you for cleaning up as well.
All right, thank you very much.
Sure. All right, next comment?
Hello, my name is Cynthia S. Esperides. I am not a resident of Summit, but do operate, well, my father operates a business in Summit. So I wanted to discuss a little bit about the ban of the gas-powered leaf blowers and the impact. I have no questions. I just have a few comments on the hardship of my dad and other fellow landscapers. The time that it now takes to clean a property is three times longer. Our goal has always been in and out and quality work. Fortunately, we can't do that now. So if the client, if the clients are complaining of us being there too long, now we're there even longer because we just have to be there. With the backpacks, with the batteries, they don't last as long, they don't have as much force. Even cleaning gutters is a major issue. We experienced this on Saturday. It wouldn't even clean. So most of the work had to be done manually and I didn't even complete the work completely. So now we have a client who's somewhat unsatisfied with what services that have been provided to them in the past have never been an issue. So I just wanted to make a comment also, the financial hardships of buying the batteries. And as we know, when you charge a cell phone at home, it charges quickly, great, it works well. When you charge it in the car, it takes forever. When you charge it in the car, it takes forever. Same thing with these batteries, though we try, it just, you know, it's not getting the full charge that a battery could from an outlet. So, and it takes longer to charge them. We do have multiple spare batteries and chargers and stuff, and we just can't keep up. And my dad's a small company, he's not one of the big companies, so. And also, for the Spanish landscapers, it's been hard for them to communicate because there really isn't anybody they could reach out to. And though I'm not a landscaper and I'm not out there, I am a landscaper's daughter, and I've been doing this since I was 12. So I know basically all my dad's clients and everything, and I know all the hardship he's going through. So I just wanted to put it out there, how hard it really is for the landscapers. And it's only been two weeks, so that's all I wanted to say. So thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Yeah, we've just gotten news that it looks like Hometown TV may not be broadcasting because of the storm. So it doesn't affect you folks in here, but I'm just putting it out there. So, next comment? Does anyone else want to comment?
Good evening, everyone. How we doing?
Thanks.
Luis Ramirez, 485 Springfield Avenue. Since we're on the topic of leaf blowers, just going to bring it back up. I think we need to work on the vocabulary. I think this is poorly handled. This is not a pilot program. This is a law that we're putting into place. There was no initiative, in my opinion, to get everyone started. I think I would have started it differently. I would have created an initiative to get landscapers involved, and then later on made it into a law, but that's another story. I was a little bit curious about the disposal of the batteries. Does that also, does that also extend to, excuse me, landscapers that are not residents of Summit? Would they also be able to dispose of the batteries if they're directly affected only by the Summit ban?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay. My other question was, is, what was it? Is if this plan doesn't go through, do we plan to reimburse any of the landscapers for the payment of these equipment that will be needed any longer?
There is, there is no plan to do that. You still own a piece of equipment that you can use if you make the choice to purchase it. That, you know, we've been told by landscapers that we've spoken to that it's possible to do this work without battery operated equipment. If you decide that you need it for what, the way you want to operate, we can't, we obviously can't tell you how to do your job. So, you know, but you won't be, you also will not be reimbursed, but you do have a piece of equipment, and this is the direction that the law is going in many, many communities, so.
No, I'm not opposed to it. I think that we need to go greener. I think that this is, you know, we need to think of our environment. I just think that we handled it a little bit poorly. I think that we used the wrong vocabulary in saying it's a pilot program. I think this is a law we're just putting into place and just need to, you know, come to effect of it. I think that, yes, we need to create initiative, create purpose, create, make a campaign, campaigns so people go more green, companies get more involved. But like I said, just putting it into play, you're going to get, you're going to get people fighting back, anyway, any shape or form. Also, you know, I would think it's also a leeway to just, you know, inform the customer, inform the customer just of the quality of the work is going to change. It's just simply supply and demand. We can't, we can't supply if we don't have the proper tools.
Okay, thank you.
You know what I'm saying?
Yes, thank you for your comment.
HTTV's up.
Okay, HTTV is apparently back up, in case anyone's interested. Okay, so next commenter? Okay, I'm going to close the public comment here. Oh, we've got another one? Okay.
Anna Fredette, 43 Morris Avenue. I've been, you know, very vocal online and writing into you guys as much as I can, so it's nice to be able to put a name to the face and face to the name, vice versa. And I'm very happy for you, Mayor, that your Meet the Mayors is coming back. That must be really exciting for you, and I definitely want to attend. So my last comment to you guys was about how I did start a petition, and I formally introduced it. Now that I have heard you will consider it and you will use it as a metric, I am happy to present it to you, as well as meet with you outside of this to go over it a little bit more, the analysis. Just hearing a fellow landscaper's daughter speak, you know, it was very hard for me. I do get a little worked up about it because my father experienced this in Montclair, and I don't want Summit to become Montclair. My dad has gotten water thrown in his face, cursed at, threatened to be put in jail over a leaf blower. He's not a drug dealer, he's not a felon, he's a hardworking businessman. And this is the direction I see us going. We're only two weeks in. You see the nasty things being put on Facebook. You see town workers who, you know, are under your care that are still using gas powered leaf blowers. And, you know, it's not fair to put this on residents and businesses if it's too hard for you to do yourself. I do hear that you have been doing this pilot for yourselves. You purchased this equipment two years ago, and you've been doing this pilot, but apparently it's still not working. So, you know, that's really what I want to say, that it's causing a lot of more divisiveness, the most divisiveness I've seen since the 2020 presidential election. And this is not what I moved here to see. This is not what I wanted things to turn into. And I think another issue that we're hearing with BMS is we're investigating, but we're not finding the source of the complaint. We have said multiple times here for this gas powered leaf blower ban that you've gone and addressed complaints, and they've been electric, or they've been edgers, or they've been lawn mowers, you know? Or we've had complaints about city trucks that are too loud, or things like that, you know? I feel like if BMS hasn't been handled since 2017, how could you so quickly do this for gas powered leaf blowers? And if I may approach, I'd like to give the formal petition.
Yep, thank you for the...
It has 479 signatures.
Okay, thank you. We'll take a look at it.
About 70%, which are residents. And then the rest are people who operate in Summit and who are also affected.
Okay, we'll be happy to take a look at it. Thank you. And as far as the city workers, my understanding is that our city workers are all using the correct equipment. Mr. Schreger, would you like to...
I'm going to have to have another one.
Excuse me?
No.
We're not going to have that.
I'm sorry.
This, you know, this is a business meeting. Okay, Mr. Schreger, would you like to address that issue?
That's correct. We're not using the gas leaf blowers at this time. I know there was some content posted on social media that shows to the contrary, it does not appear to be a city worker, not dressed like a city worker. There's other things out there. I have not seen them just based on that. I know we're not using it, and then that person was not an employee.
Thank you for clarifying that. Okay, are there any other comments? Come on up.
Hi, my name's Bob Fredette. That was my daughter. I've been in landscaping for about 41 years, and mostly I do it in Montclair. And I'll be honest with you, what they've done in Montclair, contrary to what you've been heard, is a joke. From day one in Montclair, the town used their own blowers, violated their ordinance continually. And I say this because I'm afraid, you know, you might be going down that path. But what, Montclair's had an ordinance on the books for 25 years, and they had an agreement that I signed and another contractor signed in 2000, and they just basically went right past that agreement and came up with this latest version. The latest version, as crazy as it sounds, is I can go and get a $2,000 penalty, $2,000 fine, 90 days in jail, and 90 days community service for using a leaf blower, okay? And, you know, there's very little communication in Montclair with this. We've, currently, we have an attorney. He's sent two letters to the town. They basically haven't even acknowledged the receipt of the letter. But this has been going on there for, since 95. I mean, I witnessed it, we proved stuff, and what I'm trying to give you a perspective of what I've been through, and it is frustrating for a business person when somebody drives down the street in a little pickup, you know, racing down the street like you're a drug dealer, waiting for you to open your trailer and, you know, grab you because you're pulling your blower out. And then all of a sudden, you get a summons, and you got to sit in court for half a day. I mean, this is, this is nuts. This is like what they do in China and socialism. But the reason I bring this up is I don't want this to go here. I understand blowers are noisy. I've been using them for 40 years. What I've done in the summer is we use a blower, but we use it at half speed, unless they're, like, if it rains like it is now, and tomorrow morning I got to go cut somebody's lawn, there's no way I'm going to pull out an electric blower and be able to get clippings off the sidewalk. It's just not going to happen. And what I've done, we cut grass, we leave the clippings on the lawn. That's the right way to do this. You're returning all the clippings, there's earthworms, and there's an ecosystem, there's a whole thing in there. I have a degree in horticulture, so I understand all this stuff. And again, I tried to convene that with the town of Montclair and some of the people there, and they just, you know, forget it. But the point is, there has to be more communication on these issues. If you got together with the landscapers in the town, you said, "Look, we got a noise problem, okay? You know, you've got six guys on a lawn, and the lawn's 50 feet wide, six blowers going. That's a little crazy, okay? Maybe you could do it with two blowers." Now, I know in the spring, everybody wants to get Mr. Clean every leaf out of the beds, that kind of thing, you know? I don't agree with that, but that's what people do. But in the summer months, you could take the blower and turn it down, and the blower's fine. A gas powered blower is 72 decibels. Some people have said they're 100 decibels or 200, whatever crazy numbers. They measure them at 50 feet from the blower when it's on your back. That's where they get the measurement.
Ms. Fredette, I'm going to ask you to wrap up. Your three minutes are up. Just finish your sentence.
Okay. But the point I'm making is, don't go down the path Montclair did, because right now it's stupid.
And we don't want to do that.
And, you know, they have a judge now in Montclair that threatened somebody...
Ms. Fredette, that's...
Said, "Your third offense, you're going to jail for 24 hours." That's bizarre.
We're not, we're not Montclair. We have no intent of going down that path.
But there's ways to resolve this by just communicating with people. I don't think you need a ban, so...
Ms. Fredette, we're not having a back and forth on this now.
All right.
You know, we will be happy to sit down with you and with Anna and, you know, and go over this and learn about what, you know...
That would be the best thing, is to sit in a room, take three or four hours, everybody brings it to the table, and everybody gets their viewpoints out, and you come up with something that works for everybody.
Okay, thank you.
That's the game plan. That's what I would say that would work for everybody.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other comments?
Council President, I have some emails that were received.
Oh, yes, okay, go ahead, Madam Clerk.
These all pertain to the gas leaf blower issue. There are some that are a little bit different, although they all support the ban. There are some variations of the comments. The one that's most similar is the following. Says, "I am unable to attend the 614 meeting and understand there may be some attendees who signed a petition to revoke the newly enacted GLB pilot program and may ask to speak out to revoke it. Although the topic is not on the night's agenda, I just want to express my gratitude to the common council for voting in this, on this ordinance. Since its inception, there is a hugely noticeable difference in my neighborhood. I hear birds rather than constant GL, gas leaf blower wear, and have a new sense of tranquility. I haven't noticed any difference in the appearance of the landscaping either. It is my hope that residents will continue to give this program a chance to enjoy the quiet, to see that landscapers have not lost clients, but have probably enjoyed fewer work hours, and that the quality of landscaping has remained the same. It's only for three months after all." That was, I'll read the list of names later. There was another one from Elliot Fishman of Webster Avenue. "I am writing to thank you for implementing the trial summer gas leaf blower ban. Although the ban has just been in place for a couple of weeks already, there is a tangible improvement in the quality of life in our neighborhood. I'm enjoying my backyard much more than last. Now I can work outside, read a book in my hammock, and calmly grill on my barbecue. Whereas last year at this time, those activities were regularly interrupted by background gas leaf blower noise forcing me inside. Moreover, I can now also hear birds chirping and children playing, which further adds to the quality of backyard life. These sounds were regularly blocked out last year by background machine drone. Meanwhile, yards are, yards along the block appear just as camped and tidy as they have always been. Electric leaf blowers seem to be perfectly adequate by blowing grass clippings off driveways and walkways, as they are mainly used during the summer months. As you know, there is a large constituency within Summit who are sensitive to background noise. Generally, we are the shy types, not the ones to make ruckus, speak in front of a group, or make views known in online forums. But for many years, for many years, Summit's noise code was not enforced. Leaf blowers got louder and louder, and our rights to peaceful enjoyment of our properties were trampled upon. Now we see a positive change. In closing, I just want to thank the council for showing consideration this summer to those whose nerves are wrecked by gas leaf blowers. I also want to thank differing neighbors for showing kindness as we strive to find a middle ground while appreciating how we may both see and hear things differently." There was one from Mary Beth Robb, and she, she talks about addressing the issue of overuse. Over recent years, she's noticed that instead of a quick blowing off of a patio or deck and driveway, many landscapers have men who walk up and down a driveway or patio many, many times. Is this necessary? I'm guessing many of these men are recent, hardworking immigrants anxious to prove their worth to their boss, and thus they may spend far more time than necessary to do the job. Perhaps a part of the communication campaign to landscapers and homeowners is the city could point out the savings in time, noise, and pollution if they worked more efficiently and, in my opinion, just as effectively. And she writes one more note that more communications from the city. "This trial ban was highly controversial in our town, yet once it was passed, council and the city has gone radio silent. Perhaps a communications plan is in, is in effect, but I personally have seen nothing from the city explaining and promoting this trial. Those opposed are asking some good questions that deserve to be addressed. And remember the old marketing saw a consumer needs to hear a message nine times before it really registers. In the absence of communications from the city, communication is still happening. It is just being managed in any way by, isn't just being managed anyway by the city. Online communications have become rabid and sometimes virulent. The city's taking leadership with a communications plan could go a long way towards helping everyone understand the reasons behind the trial ban. Thank you for taking on this scourge of suburban life." So if I may, I'll just read the list of names that we're all in support.
Yep.
That would be Steve Soem on Parmley Place, Lisa Berkery, no address provided, Luke Bechar, Euclid Avenue, Leslie Killian, Prospect Hill Avenue, Helen, Helene Halsey, Parmley Place, Elliot Fishman, who I read his email, Amanda O'Dowd, Edgewood Road, Catherine Le Ness, Hillcrest Avenue, Diane Langworthy, Windsor Road, David Oful, Parmley Place, Brandon Rehy, Vailmont Way, and Edward Hernandez, Parmley Place.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I just want to address one thing from Ms. Robb's email. There was, there is a communication plan. There has been, I spoke to our communications officer today, and she reviewed what she's done. She's, there has been, pretty much all the newspapers have covered it, NJ.com, The Times, The Tap, The Patch. It's actually even gotten some, I think, national attention there. It's on all the social media channels. There's a lot of information on the city website in both English, and you can actually translate our website into Spanish as well. We have a voluntary registration program, so any landscaper who wants to receive information, as information becomes available, we will email them, and it's optional, and we will only use it for this purpose, and...
Civic Plus?
Oh, yeah.
Signed up notification?
Right.
It's over 7,000 or 8,000.
Right, so we've sent out, three times, two or three times, we've sent out Civic Plus notices to anyone who's signed up for any form of notifications for the city, so...
And that's about 7,000 or 8,000 people.
People. So there has been a lot of outreach, you know? We don't have, there isn't one easy way to get in touch with everyone in the community, and there are a number of landscapers, but we certainly have, have tried to get this landscapers, but we certainly have tried to get this out in as many different ways as we can, and will continue to do so. So, with that, if there are no other comments, I'm going to close the comment period. Mr. Osborne, you have already spoken during the public...
Does it speak quite clear?
No, it's one per customer on public comment. Come on up.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Juan Hidalgo. I'm a small business owner. I just have a quick question. Why we are not allowed to use backpack blowers when the town are using now backpack blowers to clean the town's properties?
We are not using them. The community...
Do you want to prove?
You know what? You can talk to Mr. Schreger afterwards, but he has said that that video is...
No, it's not a video. It's from today.
Yeah, maybe you can speak with Mr. Schreger, and you can, because it's not really, this is not, this is not really something that...
No, but, listen, we are, we are working hard every day.
That's your prerogative, but it's not, I don't, I think that a conversation with the department had at that point is appropriate.
It's really the appropriate thing. This is really not an appropriate thing to be doing in this setting. So, go ahead and make your statement, and then if you'd like to step outside with Mr. Schreger and show him what you're talking about. Okay?
Okay. Fine. Now, I have a second question.
Yes.
What's going to happen with all our customers? They are not happy because we cannot get on time. I have test messengers for a customer in Iceland on Saturday, and he was like, technically telling me that we need to discuss better on timing because I'm taking too long for getting to his property. So, technically, I told him, "They are taking a lot of time to clean everybody's property," and the body, what technically is ridiculous, but what they're just carrying and charging in the forefront of the house for 20 minutes. By that time, what we're doing? We're wasting time, we're paying extra labor for the guys, and then we're not getting the job done, and then we're getting complaints. That never happened before. So, how are we going to do that? How me and all those landscapers that are here, they're going to survive for the next month and a half or two months? I mean, we're going to get complaints and complaints every day. This is Summit. This is not Maplewood. This is not Montclair. We like to do things clean. We like to do our best job because that's why people's paying for. To change right now and do things quickly is going to affect my business. I'm going to lose customers. And then customers, they're not going to be happy only because the noise. And I think it's too many other things. They are causing probably more noise than a backpack they were using for maybe 10 minutes they were spending cleaning on a driveway. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your comment. Are there any other comments? I'm going to close the, okay, come on up.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. My name's Daniel Garom. I have a small business right here in Summit. I have, I would say, 100 customers in Summit. Probably like 80% of those dare not agree with the electric blower. I believe that's the future. I believe electric blower is the future. I believe gas blowers is going to be done, but I think it's not the right time because the electric blower battery only lasts an hour. You know, that's the big issue. I bought new electric blowers, and I bought two batteries for each blower, but it's not enough. You know, if we, we'll get to the point where, let's say, the battery was going to last at least three, four hours, I will sell all, I will get rid of all my gas blowers, and I will get electric blowers without a problem. But that's, that's my biggest concern, you know, and I disagree with the people. I hear what she was saying about the people that is happy because there is no noise. But I want, I want to ask you something. One of the best things that I love about this country, and I love about Summit, is the democracy, when the people pick what they want. I would like to know how many people, residents from Summit, are agree and are disagree with this law. And let's do democracy and see who wins. If the people who is complaining about the noise wins, let's pass the rule. I can guarantee you, it's going to be more people that is going to be against to use electric blower at this point, right now. I have a lot of customers, they own their own backpacks because they clean their properties and they cannot use it. And I hear what she said, like she was reading, like, the people who is happy with these new regulations, but I can bring you next week, I can probably bring you 600 people signing petitions to ban the electric blowers. For now, I would say. Like I say, I'm happy. I'm from Costa Rica. I wasn't born here. I love this country. I love Summit. I've been living here for about 18 years, and I'm a green person, but I believe it's not the right time. And I would like all people to consider that, you know, because always is the small business people, is the hard-working people who has to pay, you know, for, like, who has to, you know, go through this. I heard the people who is complaining about the noise downstairs.
Sir, your time is up.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just make a quick response?
Yes, go ahead.
So, I, we keep hearing this, so, and I want to go back to this point where I think Mr. McNamara said, "Why didn't you look at a compromise?" And I, you know, we've been discussing gas power leaf blowers a lot, and we spent so much time on that this year. So, I don't want to belabor the point, but I do want to go back to the point that this was a compromise. We had many, many people, and as I said at the hearing that we had on this, we've had more engagement on this issue than any other issue over the last two years. We went through a global pandemic, social unrest, you know, police issues, like so many things, and this is the issue that the community really engaged on. We had so much engagement, but it was very equal, and it was actually weighted in favor of the people that wanted the ban. There were more people that came to the council meeting and rode in and asked us to do this ban than there were people against it. So, I know that we're not pulling all of Summit, but this is a very, this is a very divided issue. It's not one side or the other on this, and we did come to a compromise. A lot of the people that were asking us to do something about the noise wanted us to ban this completely. Most communities that have passed bans have passed six-month bans. The bans in Montclair, Maplewood, all of Long Island, you know, all the other towns we looked at, most of the bans went from March to October. We did a three-month limited pilot ban as a compromise because we did listen to all of you that were asking us to consider all these things. We did it a pilot so we could really get the engagement, see if it worked, and get the feedback. We did a hardship exemption, which I think we're the only community, except for Palo Alto, California, that I can find, that did, allows for hardship exemption that people can apply for. And we structured the fee schedule so that the first, the first violation is a warning and can be educational, and then it goes up from there. So, we did do the compromise. We have listened to you. This whole, this job and what democracy is and government is, is balancing of interests, and that's our job. It's a hard job. It'd be a lot easier if we sat up here and did nothing. It would be much easier. We would, we would have much shorter meetings. We would have much fewer people yelling at us and confronting us on everything that we do if we did nothing. Instead, we try to listen to the needs of the community and come to solutions that may not make everyone happy, but that try to strike a balance. Everything we do is a balance, and this is just a very stark reminder of that. But every time we pass, you know, a resolution to pave a road, it's a balance because we have to pay for that, and that payment means that we have to use your taxpayer dollars to pave the road. So, even the most non-controversial things we do are balancing, and that's our job. We don't get paid for it, but that's our job. That's why we do this. That's why you elected us to represent you, and that means we have to represent everyone in the community. The people who want a complete ban on all leaf blowers, the people who want to use their leaf blowers whenever they want to use them. And we have to figure out a way to balance that and come somewhere in the middle. That is what democracy is, and I'm glad you brought that up, because it's recognizing the needs of everyone in the community. Mr. Fishman brought up this point. There's, there's 20 to 20, you know, he brought in scientific data that says that 20% of population is intensely affected by this low-frequency noise that BMS and the leaf blowers and things do, that, that some people can tune it out and some people literally cannot. So, with all of us home this past two years and people trying to do school and work from home, they were intensely affected by the noise, and they asked us very emotionally to do something about it. And we looked into it, and we researched, we spent all this time, and we came to this compromise. We came to this compromise after talking to lots of people and talking to lots of people who didn't want the ban, and that's where we came to. So, we are really trying to listen to all of you that are here. We are not ignoring you. This is where we came out as a compromise in a test program for a limited period with a hardship exemption and with a fee structure that allows for a lot of education rather than punishment. So, I hope that addresses some of the concerns. We're going to try it. We're going to look at it. We're going to get feedback and see what we'll do from here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Little. Does anyone else have anything to add? So, with that, oh, go ahead. Councilmember Ellen.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to say through you, to the landscapers and the father who bought a gas leaf blower for his son this summer, it is a constant balance, and everybody knew where I voted, and when I voted against it, I've caught criticism for not supporting the ban. So, I've gotten the other side of it. So, I don't know where that leaves us today, but I would say that we would all, in earnest, after this season is over, that we will absolutely ensure that we have this community who has been very vocal and has come to these meetings to share your thoughts, that you are a big contingency that we need to listen to for whatever is moving forward. So, I just personally want to say, I'm sorry that you guys have suffered, and I know it's been a very difficult time, so.
Are there any other comments from anyone?
Okay.
Any comments from members of the public? Come on up, Rosemary.
Rosemary Grace, 12 Chestnut. I've been listening to this going on now and coming to the meetings for a while, and I just want to say that I think you've been very fair, and I appreciate everyone who did come to the balanced and fair decision. I totally support the ban. I would like, I'm one of those folks that would like to see a permanent ban because I think that that's where we're going. And I'd like to say to the gentleman who said, "Not now." Well, if not now, when? You know, there always has to be a time. And you've taken a very measured look at this and studied it and brought the, what I would call the special interests. Let's face it, the landscapers who, and the people who want to have their lawns done very rapidly are a special interest group, a privileged special interest group. That's my perspective, and I think that the majority of folks in town are moving ahead and would like to see the environment and our mental health protected. And I don't think we should be governing by a social media ballot, a whatever. That's not the way to do it. I appreciate that you are giving some time to reviewing that, and lots of good issues were brought up. People's profits are being affected, and when people's profits are affected, naturally, they're going to come up and speak about that. But the environment and mental health are more important. We can balance the profit, find a way so that people don't go out of business. And I don't, haven't heard anybody say they're going out of business, but find a way to protect the livelihoods while still maintaining, protecting our environment and our mental health. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Thank you. Okay. Are there any other, last call on comments. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment period. Okay, and we're going to move on to resolutions. So, our first, we will be making some changes to the agenda. Maybe I'll just give everyone a minute to, people to step out who want to. So, Councilmember Vartan, would you like to get started on the two finance resolutions?
Yes. Thank you, Council President. So, this is Resolution Number 7965. It is a resolution to amend the municipal budget. This amendment is based on the review of the budget under state examination. These numbers were not available to the city or to the Board of Education at the time the budget was introduced. However, this resolution amends the budget accordingly. I move, however, to table this resolution for a reason I'll get into in the next resolution.
Okay, and I second that.
Thank you.
Okay, so, you want to move on to the second resolution and...
Do we have to vote on that one first?
We don't, you don't have to vote on tabling, right?
You don't have to vote on it. I need a motion and a second.
We've got a motion and a second.
Okay, that's all I need.
Okay, so we don't have to vote on it.
The motion is to table both or just the one?
Just the one so far.
Okay.
Ready for the second one?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay. This is Number 7956. This resolution sets forth the summary of 2021 revenues and appropriations, the 2021 municipal operating budget, sewer utility operating budgets, and parking utility operating budgets. So, here's what's happening. We are trying to use the funds from the American Rescue Plan, as the President and the Congress of the United States have intended, to offset lost revenue from the global pandemic. Our budget has not yet been approved because of a position that some in Trenton are taking, which is that the fiscal recovery funds should be used for a different purpose that will create a greater hardship on the city's current financial position. This is very frustrating, but we are working closely with those in Trenton, our state and federal legislators, to resolve this disagreement in a timely manner. Therefore, again, I must move to table this resolution until our council meeting on July 6, 2021.
And I second that.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that, we will move to, so this is, so in a nutshell, what we've just done is, this is the vote on the budget and the amendments to the budget, and so we will, hopefully, on July 6, we will have an approval from the state on how to proceed, and we'll be able to vote on the budget. So, we'll move on now to ordinances for hearing. And Madam Clerk, could you read the first ordinance, please?
Yes. Ordinance Number 21-3237, an ordinance to vacate a portion of the right-of-way of Ashwood Court adjacent to Block 4208, Lot 13, and Block 4208, Lot 14, in the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Little.
Thank you, Madam President. This is an ordinance to vacate a portion of the right-of-way of Ashwood Court. This portion of Ashwood Court is being vacated in accordance with the settlement agreement dated October 10, 2020, between various residents of Summit, the City of Summit, and the City of Summit Zoning Board, and Morris Habitat for Humanity. As you know, that this, there's a Habitat for Humanity project, affordable housing project, that's going on the old Italian-American club. There was an agreement with the residents, instead of having it exit, the access to the property being, exiting through Ashwood Court, it's now going to access from Morris Avenue. This property was originally deeded to the city in order to, for the city to use as a road. So, under the settlement agreement, we are ceding it back to the property owners, and in the terms of the property, the settlement agreement, they will cede it back to the city to be used for, to establish two other units of affordable housing. So, it's a kind of a complicated process, but as soon as the zoning board approved the plan, we cede it to the residents, they cede it back to us so that we can get a, so that the deed restriction for the road will be vacated. So, I ask that we open this ordinance for hearing.
I second it.
Are there any comments from members of council? Councilmember Vartan?
Thank you, Council President. I think I spoke about this when this settlement agreement came before us, but this is basically a win-win-win because everybody who's involved gets something. So, the residents of Ashwood Court get the entrance of this habitat project, not to be off the court, but rather off of Morris Avenue. Habitat gets to build the project as they were hoping to build the project, and the city gets two more affordable housing units. So, this is just really very well done, and I want to congratulate everyone who was a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Vartan. Does anyone else have any comments? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none, I'll close the hearing. And moving on, we have a second finance ordinance. Do you need to read it in order for us to not...
We should have... We should have the hearing.
Oh, we're going to have the hearing?
Yes.
Okay, right, we're just not going to vote on it.
Right.
Okay, go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Okay, thank you. 21-3238, an ordinance to establish the 2021 salaries, wages, or compensations of and for the officers and employees of the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. So as was just said, this ordinance establishes the salaries, wages, or compensations for all city employees. This is union and non-union employees. As explained at the last council meeting, this ordinance is done once annually in concert with the municipal budget. Since the budget is not able to be passed and adopted this evening, I will move to open this hearing, but then we will vote on it at the next council meeting, hopefully.
And I second that motion. So I'm going to open the hearing now. Are there any comments from members of council on this matter? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, last chance on council. All right, I'm going to close the hearing. All right, and now moving on to ordinances for final consideration. Madam Clerk.
21-3237, an ordinance to vacate a portion of the right-of-way of Ashwood Court adjacent to Block 4208, Lot 13, and Block 4208, Lot 14, in the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey.
Thank you. Councilmember Little, would you like to introduce this?
Thank you, Council President. As we just had the hearing on this issue, this is to approve vacating this portion of the right-of-way in order to comply with the settlement agreement for the affordable housing on Morris Avenue. So I ask that we approve this ordinance.
I second it.
Okay, Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Hairston?
A resounding yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Naidoo?
Yes.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye.
And moving on, so the motion carries. Moving on to our second ordinance for final consideration. I assume this is when we make the motion, correct?
You can make the motion.
Okay.
Just for the record, it's ordinance 21-3238 to establish 2021 salaries.
Go ahead, Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. As we just discussed, this is the 2021 annual salary ordinance. I move to table this ordinance until the council meeting on July 6th, 2021.
And I second that. So we don't need to vote on the tabling. Okay, so now we're moving on to ordinances for introduction. Madam Clerk, could you read the first one, please?
Yes, an ordinance ID number 7918, an ordinance amending the code Chapter 7 Traffic, Section 7-825, Regulations for the Movement and the Parking of Traffic on Municipal Property and Board of Education Property, subsection 7-25.2, Municipal Parking Lots.
Councilmember Little.
Thank you, Council President. This is an ordinance to amend the parking ordinance to allow for the removal of the gates on the DeForest Avenue lots. So it's just that the wording of the current ordinance specifies gates and specifies the hours that you are allowed to go in with the gate. So it's just going to bring the ordinance in compliance so that it will allow for a non-gated system. We are going to be installing the same kiosks as we use in the rest of the town for those lots, so it'll be consistent throughout the town and the same park mobile kiosk systems that everyone is familiar with, and the gates will be removed. So this ordinance is allowing for that use of the DeForest lots. And I ask that we introduce this ordinance.
And I second that. So roll call?
Roll call?
Yep.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Naidoo?
Yes.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to the second community programs ordinance for introduction, please.
ID number 7919, an ordinance amending the code Chapter 7 Traffic, Section 7-8 Parking, subsection 7-8.5 Parking, Time Limited on Certain Streets, subsection 7-8.5A, Time Limit Parking.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Little.
Thank you, Madam President. This is an ordinance to establish employee-only metered parking spaces on Park Avenue. This came from a request from a business that was located on Park Avenue since all the parking in that area is either for two hours or one hour, and there wasn't a place for employees who need to be parking for longer periods of time to go. So we, our Parking Services Director, Rita McNanny, and Lieutenant Richel met and identified some spaces that seemed appropriate for that use, and those will be bagged and used for employee parking. So we, I would ask that we introduce this ordinance.
And I second that. Roll call, Madam Clerk, please.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Naidoo?
Yes.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye.
Okay, so moving on to resolutions. We've got more fun with finance.
Thank you, Council President. That's what I'm here for. Resolution number 7886, this resolution authorizes municipal salaries for 2021. This resolution is also subject to adoption of the budget. Therefore, I move to table this resolution as well.
Okay.
Would love a second.
Yes, but I'm just, go ahead.
If I may?
Yes, go ahead, Madam.
The city treasurer and I spoke, and I thought that you mentioned that this was not subject to the budget passage. Go ahead.
Through you, Council President, yes.
Yes, please.
I think there's a little bit of confusion, but this is the July 1st steps, or the merits. So they go without the ordinance, so this one is okay to go ahead and vote on it if you all are comfortable with that.
I was bound to mess one of them up. It does say it. It does say it in the agenda.
It does. Yeah, it does say that.
My whole plan went out the window today, so it's fine. It's okay.
With that, Council President, I believe the council member has to make a new motion. Okay, so why?
I'm going to make a new motion.
Perfect. And I'll second this.
Yes, okay. Thank you, Council President. So again, this resolution authorizes municipal salaries for 2021. This is the steps increases for municipal employees. Therefore, I move to adopt this resolution now at this meeting.
And I second it.
Thank you.
And so now I'm going to open it up if anyone has any comments or questions. So anyone from the public have any comments? I guess no one from council, so all those in favor, oh, wait, roll call on that one? Or no?
Not necessary.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And we'll move on to the second finance resolution, which is straightforward.
No pressure. This is resolution number 7916. This resolution declares a vacancy in the Finance Department as per our closed session conversation. We, our excellent tax collector will be retiring, and we are declaring this vacancy for a full-time deputy tax collector, and I move to adopt this resolution.
And I second that. Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And now we're moving on to capital projects. Councilmember Little.
Thank you, Council President. The first capital projects resolution is number 7951, and it's to approve a temporary parklet for, at Bank Street, for Boxwood Coffee. As we've established many of these parklets throughout town, they've been very successful. And Boxwood Coffee has come to us and asked for additional outdoor seating space, as many of the other restaurants have. So we have identified one space right on Bank Street that they can use, and I ask that we approve this resolution for them.
A second? Sorry.
Okay, are there any comments from members of the public, from members of council? Councilmember Naidoo?
You know, I'm going to, I actually was having lunch with one of my partners who lives, doesn't live in our town. He lives in South Orange. And he was, he said he travels through Summit all the time because he goes biking up. And he said, "You guys have such a wonderful downtown. It is such an active, lively downtown." And I think, you know, most of the public is not here right now, but those of us, those who are watching, you know, we have been, it has been such an incredible thing that we have been able to have after this COVID period where, I think, where we were sitting last year at this point in time, I think we were all very worried whether we would have a functioning downtown still left. And look where we are now, and I think it's incredible. And obviously, it's a lot of hard work with lots of people, and I'm not going to go through that. But I just, you know, just seeing this resolution, this is like the tail end of so many different parklets and closing off Maple Street and the lights and everything, and the farmer's market that we had last year that we were able to do. It's just one of those things that, you know, it's really incredible, the amount of different things to help maintain businesses. We had a lot of businesses speak tonight, but there is also a lot of efforts that were done to maintain a lot of businesses in this town.
Thank you, Councilmember Naidoo. Any other comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Capital Projects number two, Councilmember Little.
Thank you, Council President. Capital Projects number two is number 7908, and it's to award the bid for the City of Summit Cooperative Pricing System for the 2021 Microsurfacing Program, not to exceed So this micropaving program is really another win-win process because instead of the whole milling and paving project, which is extremely expensive, we can use the micropaving to extend the life of roads and keep them in really good shape. So we have been doing this program. It's been very successful, and this is the new project. I just wanted to mention for those people listening, the following streets are included for the 2021 project: Ruthven Place, Fay Place, Brainerd Road, Kenneth Court, Cedar Street, North Street, South Street, John Street, Glensoke Avenue, Blackburn Place, Beekman Terrace, Edgewood Drive and Edgewood Road. So all of those roads will be in this project, and I ask that we approve this resolution.
I second it.
Are there any comments from members of council?
Just a quick question.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Council President. Just, when does this typically take place, micropaving?
For you, Council President, we always try to have them completed before the school year.
So we allow them to start anytime after July 4th and to be done by August. If there is rain, it has happened, but typically we're done, and we're about the second or third week of August.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Director Schager. All right, so any other comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to capital projects number three.
Thank you. Capital Projects number three is number 7921, and it's to authorize expenditure from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund for the Morris Habitat for Humanity 12-unit Affordable Housing Project at 146 Morris Avenue. We previously approved expenditures in the amount of $1.2 million for this project. This is an additional $200,000, which will cover the extra two units. So it is going to be a total of $1.4 million for this project. It's going to add much-needed affordable housing for the city. So we are very excited to get this project going, and I ask that we approve this resolution.
Second it.
Are there any comments from members of council? Councilmember Naidoo?
It's just that, you know, Councilwoman Little correctly said that this was originally, I think it was back in 2017 or 2018, 2017, 17, that we approved actually the 1.2 for Habitat. So I'm very glad to see that now we've been able to get this project to this stage, and hopefully we'll see the construction. And as Councilman Vartan said, where we are is actually a win-win-win.
Thank you. Councilmember Hairston.
Yes, thank you, Council President. And I do want to thank our administrator for the negotiations between the parties on this to make this happen. And really, it's been a long time coming, and so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, capital projects number four.
Thank you. Capital Projects number four is number 7922, and it's to authorize a grant submission to New Jersey Urban and Community Forestry Program stewardship application. And these are grants that are awarded for projects that use urban and community forest management goals for those types of projects. And we are going to be applying for resiliency planning projects and reforestation and tree planting. So we are applying for a grant for tree planting and updating our inventory of trees through the city, and I ask that we approve this resolution.
I second it.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Last capital projects resolution, Councilmember Little.
Thank you. The last capital projects resolution is number 7527, and that's to rescind the GSA contract award for the transfer station building shell replacement in the amount of $269,078. As you know, we approved this grant, this award previously. It was awarded at the end of 2020 and was valid for 30 days. And although the contractor originally agreed to extend and honor the pricing into 2021, the material and labor shortage that is currently affecting the construction industry eventually resulted in a very significant cost increase, which would have resulted in significant change orders and uncontrollable delays that were beyond the scope of the original contract. And so they were no longer able to extend that and honor that pricing. So this contract is going to be rescinded, and hopefully, we will rebid it at a time when the costs are a little bit lower and go forward with this project. So I ask that we approve this resolution to rescind this contract.
I second it.
Are there any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So now we have two community programs and parking services resolutions. Councilmember Little.
That's me again. Somebody keep talking. The first community programs resolution is number 7917, and it's to authorize purchase of digital parking equipment for the DeForest Avenue lots. There's an option A and an option B. So as I discussed in the earlier ordinance introduction, we are looking at removing the gates from the DeForest lots and installing the same kiosk system that we have in the rest of Summit. So there are two options, and one is to install machines that accept coins, and one is to install machines that do not accept coins. The recommendation from the community program committee, from Councilmember O'Sullivan and myself, is that we install the kiosks that do not accept coins in this area. And the reasons are that they cost, the cost is more. It's $5,000 more for those machines, and the minimal parking fee for those DeForest lots is $1. So as opposed to the other kiosks in town where the minimum fee is a quarter, and we might expect residents to have a quarter in their pocket and maybe want to use that, the minimum fee is a dollar. So it would be at least four quarters or more, and we just don't anticipate that that many people are going to be using coins for those machines. And certainly, we anticipate that the future of, you know, use is going to be using cash money and coins less and less so that they, that this cost would not be justified. But I am willing to hear the opinions of the council members and to see what we should vote on.
Okay, and I'll.
So I ask that we approve this resolution. I guess, do we need to discuss first and then?
I think the discussion should come first, and then you make a motion.
Discuss first, and then I'll make a motion on based on which one.
Right, okay, so just, just for everyone's, so option A is no coins, option B is with the coin receptacle. So I'll open up for comments. Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. I respectfully disagree with my colleague. I think we should go with the machines that accept the coins. There are three main reasons. The first is that they are legal tender. Who are we to say that your money is no good here? If we're going to charge money, we should accept all of the money. Second is consistency. We're already making a change to something, and the public is going to have to deal with something that is slightly different than what it is now. Granted, it's better, but if we can make it so that what every parking system that we have throughout the whole downtown is the same, I think that it's definitely what we should do. And the third is basically this idea of convenience. For $5,000 less or $5,000 more, we can make things either more convenient for parking authority staff, or we can make things more convenient for the general public. And I think that's the choice that we should make. So I think we should spend a little bit more money, and I think we should go with option B. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor?
I just have a thought. I'm reminded of what a former councilman used to say, is when we use technology, it should, it should not cost us more in manpower. And when you're going to have guys walking around collecting coins, it's not, it's not making it more convenient for them. That costs more, that costs money to pay them to collect those coins, as opposed to the dollars. And I think the first, the lowest amount of money to be paid in the DeForest lots is a dollar, and it goes up by dollar increments. So I don't know, that many people are walking around, four, eight, you know, twelve, twelve quarters in their pocket. But I think that when you, when you install technology, one of your guiding principles ought to be decrease in cost for manpower. That's my only thought.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Any other comments? Councilmember Hairston.
Thank you, Council President. So this is not one that I need to fall on the sword about, but I do want to give another perspective. As someone who saved my coins and kept them in my ashtray so that I could use them, with the frustration of not trying to fold those dollars to make them fit into the parking machines. So it was a way to use my coins, and I feel like it is a, the other thing that I don't like to pit, like the contest has to be between benefiting the employees and benefiting the community. I like a win-win where everybody's benefiting here, and it didn't seem like $5,000 was a big enough addition to make coins, you know, excluded is not that big of a saving. So my preference is for B with the coins, especially since that's the way they are around at the rest of the kiosks. But as I said, it's not one that I feel that that strongly about, because having the credit card option, and I was not the biggest fan of Park Mobile, because that would often fail on me on the train if we were passing through or something like that. So that's why I like having the option of being able to use my coins or the nice flattened dollar, if that was possible. So just to weigh in.
Thank you. Councilmember Allen, your, oh, you had your hand up, so.
Yep, yeah, sorry. Thank you, Council President. Sorry, David.
I talk too much.
I'm like Susan, or Councilwoman Hairston, sorry. I feel like it's not something I want to die on the sword for, but I do like consistency, as Councilman Vartan says, but I appreciate the mayor's stance that it should be less expensive if we're going to technology. And my concern is, is that it doesn't hold a lot of coins, as I've been told. So I think we're going to be short on enforcement as it is, and I wouldn't want them focusing on quarters, you know, collection. But, you know, again, it's not something that I, either way, but I would probably go for the one without the quarters.
Councilmember Naidah.
Thank you, Council President. I'm, I'm torn here, because I like the idea of saving the $5,000. So that, that's, that, and I, and I agree with what the mayor said, and I've always said it also, that, you know, technology shouldn't, you shouldn't be duplicative of personnel. So, so that, that, but I do have a question, and maybe, maybe Rita could answer it. So how would, how would we know, like, for instance, what Councilwoman Allen said, like, you would need to have somebody go in and take out the change or whatever. How does this technology work that, you know, somebody knows, is it just that they would go on a regular routine, like every, we just schedule mornings, we go, we look and see how many quarters are there, it's filled in the container or whatever? Or is there some kind of like pinging device? You know where I'm going with Rita.
Through you, Council President. You know, the technology has improved over the years. We now know what the digital machines on the backend, the software of how many coins and how many bills are in each machine. But my concern is, compared to the DeForest lots with the AMANO equipment currently and the digital T2 machines, the coin boxes for T2 are about this big. AMANOS are huge.
I'm sorry, David?
The AMANO coin boxes are huge, and it even stores coins. It's called a hopper. It stores them so we never run out of change for people. So two things with the change, one is we're not going to provide change. But also, I'm afraid, like, some kiosks, like the library lot, who has 50 cents an hour, we're collecting those machines three times a week. So now, go to DeForest, which we have three times the amount of parking spaces. We're going to be collecting them, maybe some days, it depends, twice a day if everyone's using coins. So that's a concern of mine. Now, we can, you know, I was down in Wildwood last weekend, and the only option they had was Park Mobile. And I didn't agree with that, you know, I have Park Mobile. But I could see that frustrating people that, you know, they couldn't even put a dollar bill in. There was no kiosk, there was no meter. And I just think, I know they're seasonal, it's a seasonal town, and I think some communities are going that way, but I think with us having dollar bills, credit card, and Park Mobile options for the DeForest lots, I don't think we need coins, but I'll leave that up to you. That's just my input.
I mean, I continue to struggle, because I agree with Councilman Vartan in some ways also, that this is legal tender. How do you say to a person, you have money, but, and then they don't have anything else? Anyway, thank you.
Councilmember Little.
I just, I just want to respond. We obviously talked about this issue at great length in the Community Programs Committee, and we also discussed it at S-PAC. And we told them that we would, at that, at that time, we told them the recommendation would be for no coin machines. No one objected on S-PAC, there was no, there were no objections or even questions about it. The consistency argument, what I would say is the consistency, I don't, there's already inconsistency because the minimum amount on the streets is 25 cents, and this is a dollar. There's different parking structures, so it's not the same regardless. We still do take legal tender, we don't, we are not restricting it to just Park Mobile, and credit cards, we take dollar bills, which makes more sense if it's the minimum fee is a dollar. And I think that we should be not only looking to save money and, and go, you know, looking at the cost of this, but also looking to what is going to be the future, you know, what is going to be the use in the future. And I think we are moving more and more away from money and cash money and coin money to more, you know, contactless, credit cards, those things. And we should be looking to install machinery that addresses future needs and not just the needs right now. So for all those reasons, and because of the concern of the collecting of the coins, which if you think about, if people, if a few people a day are using the coins in the other machines, that's one quarter, you know, in each machine. Here, it's at least four quarters and maybe more, and it's going to fill up quickly if people are using coins. So it's, there's a labor cost, and, and we are struggling with labor shortage in parking. So for all those reasons, we did, we did really analyze this, we did ask lots of questions, we did look at it, and the recommendation from the committee is for the coinless machines.
Thank you, Councilmember Little. Was there, was this addressed in, at SDI as well?
I am not on that.
Councilmember Vartan?
Yes, it was. I don't think at SDI we discussed coins or no coins. Do you remember?
No, I left that meeting to go to safety. But I, my recollection, though, is that in other SDI meetings, they have very strongly been pushing Park Mobile.
Right, yes, yeah.
To all their purpose.
Okay, so.
Can I do three more quick things? Very quick, very quick. My thing-
Technically six now, Greg.
Three more very quick things. So first of all, enforcement people are not the people who are doing the collection of coins. That's a different group of people.
But there's only one person there.
Right, so it's a different person entirely. But we're not taking enforcement ability away by having somebody have to go pick up the coins. That's one thing. Right now, three-quarters of people are paying by credit card or Park Mobile anyway. So you could say, well, okay, three-quarters of people, should we really be doing something for one quarter of people? But that's one in four people right now that are paying with either cash or change. And then the third thing is, if the coin slots are full, then they just won't accept any more coins, and that's okay. And then we can pick them up whenever we can pick them up. So I think if we're moving forward towards a future where we are paying, people are paying less with coins and cash anyway, then it'll just phase out over time, but having the ability to do so won't hurt anybody. And that's my, those are my last-
But can I tell you how many, how many calls you're going to get from people that say, it said I could use a coin, but like, it's full. What's wrong with it?
Actually, your point right now makes me convinced that we should go with a no coin.
There's no room for the coins.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to allow Director McNanny to-
Yeah, if I may comment back to that, yes, the machine will display when the coin box is full. But the issue is, if people are used to paying with coins and they can't, then they're not going to pay. And then they may get a ticket now with the enforcement. And it just, you know, it puts a bad taste in their mouth that, you know, the machine wasn't collected, you know, it's jammed with money, and now I get a ticket because I couldn't pay. And I just don't think that's fair for $5,000, my personal.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I actually agree with, with that. I think the fact that, you know, that you can't pay and that it then becomes a frustration for people is another reason not to do this.
I mean, right, if, if a person is, has, says, I have money, you just wouldn't accept my money, and now you're giving me a ticket for the fact that you, you failed to do your part of the bargain essentially, you can't give me a ticket for that. I think that, I would agree, I think that actually answers the question for me. Thank you.
I think we talked ourselves into the no coins.
Functionally, it's the same thing, though. It's the same thing, though.
All right, did you have something else, Councilmember Allen?
No, no, I'm laughing.
You don't have three more?
I was agreeing with you, with my fingers.
Okay, all right, so I think we're going to make a motion now on option A, correct? Double check.
Rosie, can you just?
Yeah.
Make sure that I'm giving the right one.
I have it. Okay, option A is without coins.
Without coin acceptors.
Acceptors.
Okay, I would now ask that we approve the resolution 7917, option A, which is to purchase the equipment without the coin receptors.
And I will second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? You don't want to oppose?
No.
Okay, motion carries. Ananamous. Okay. All right, so now we're on to law and labor.
No, I still want to wish.
Oh, wait, did I miss one?
Yes, number two.
Okay, it's like, because I wrote over it, I'm sorry. All right, so go ahead, Councilmember Little.
Thank you, Council President, I apologize. The second community programs resolution is number 7964, and to declare a vacancy in the Parking Services Agency for a parking, part-time parking enforcement officer. As we discussed, we have lost several employees due to sickness and leaving. And this is a part-time officer who's been a great employee, but she's leaving to take a full-time position at another agency, so we have a vacancy, and we are asking for approval for declaring the vacancy for this part-time enforcement officer, who will definitely be needed once we take down the gates. So I ask that we approve this resolution.
And I second it. Any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Director McNanny?
Through you, Council President, I just want to make one clarification. This is to replace a current officer. This is not going to fulfill my need of a full-time officer that I need for the DeForest lots, so I just want to make that clear. Because that is coming to you at the next meeting.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. So any other questions, comments? Any comments from the public? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we're on to law and labor. Councilmember Allen.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to introduce Resolution 7947, authorizing the renewal of Marco Polo's retail liquor license for one year beginning July 1st, 2021, and ending June 30th, 2022. I adopt, I move to adopt this resolution.
I second it.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, labor number two.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce Resolution 7957, which authorizes a stipend for Chief Bartolati while serving as captain, but assuming the role of officer in charge of the City of Summit, the Police Department, for the period between March 21st through May 30th, 2020. This appointment required him to perform all the duties and responsibilities of the Office of the Chief of Police, as well as the duties and responsibilities of Deputy Emergency Management Coordinator for the city. Chief Bartolati will receive a one-time, non-pensionable stipend in the amount of $7,500 for the period mentioned. Additionally, he will be entitled to 280 hours or 35 days of paid vacation, leave annually commencing January 1st, 20, I keep getting stuck on the year, 2021. Thank you to Chief Bartolati for stepping up during this very critical and uncertain time during the pandemic, and I ask to approve this resolution.
And I second that request.
Are there any comments from members of council?
Just very quickly, I think we were very lucky to have then-Captain Bartolati step up and do such an excellent job in charge of the department during that time. Thank you.
I agree with that, and there is precedent for this. We have awarded stipends for members of city, of city staff who have filled other positions, so I just wanted to note that.
Well, we didn't, but historically, council-
Historically, we as council, yes, not this council.
Not this council.
Thank you for clarification. Are there any other comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, go on to law and labor three, please.
Thank you. Pursuant to our closed discussion session, I am introducing Resolution 7945 to authorize extension of sick leave with pay for an employee in the Fire Department. The extension will be through December 30th, 2021, and we send our well wishes to this employee.
And I second it.
Any comments?
I asked to, to move the, I moved to adopt the resolution.
I'll second it.
I second it, yeah.
Thank you. It's getting late.
Yeah, it is getting late. Any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And one last law and labor resolution.
Pursuant to our discussion in closed session, I'm introducing Resolution 7952 to authorize the extension of sick leave with pay for an employee in the Parking Services Agency. The previous extension was granted through June 1st, and since the employee is not well enough to return, this extension will be through August 25th, 2021. We also wish this employee the best during their recovery, and I ask to approve this resolution.
I second.
Any comments from members of council? Comments from the public? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're on to the consent agenda. So we are going to pull out Capital Projects number one to consider separately, which is the West End Avenue Improvement Project.
And I will recuse myself, since I live on West End Avenue.
Okay, so let's do that one, and then we'll, then we'll do the rest of the consent agenda. So Councilmember Little, do you want to just, do we need to, does she need to introduce it then?
Are we doing a separate vote, or we just?
A separate vote.
I want to speak about it.
Oh, okay, so we'll just do a separate vote for it?
Yeah.
Okay, so we don't have to speak about any of this.
Right.
Okay, so is there anything else that we need to pull out or that anyone wants to speak about in the consent agenda? Hearing none, so all those in favor of the consent agenda minus Capital Projects number one?
Aye.
Oh, I need a motion.
Oh.
We're going to do-
So moved.
Okay.
Second.